Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the February 23rd, 2023 work session of the Henrico County School Board. And the first item on our agenda today is the approval of the agenda. Board members may have a motion, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda for this afternoon is closed session. Board members may have a motion to go into closed session, please.
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under Item A1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, salaries, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Let's have a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. Welcome back to the work session on February 23rd, 2023. The next item on the agenda is the certification of closed session. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Now Dr. Cashwell will present items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. For the first items, there are three policies, policy recommendations for which we'll be seeking the board's approval at our monthly meeting this evening, but want to bring forth those policies again for last review if there are any questions. And again, you've seen these at prior meetings. The first one is Item 4.01, and that's the review of a policy that's recommended for retirement related to student athlete concussions because we have another policy, P6-09-004, that covers that item. Any questions on that one? All right. The next one is a proposed new policy. And again, this is Policy P6-20-007, Sudden Cardiac Arrest Prevention. And that was developed in accordance with the Virginia Code, which requires school divisions to develop and update policies and procedures regarding the identification and handling of symptoms that may lead to sudden cardiac arrest in student athletes. Any questions on that one? All right. And next is another proposed new policy, P6-20-008. And this is Heat-Related Illness Prevention, which was also developed in accordance with guidelines developed by the Virginia Department of Education pursuant to Senate Bill 161 from 2022. And those guidelines require school divisions to develop and update policies and procedures regarding the prevention, recognition, and management of student athletes who may be experiencing heat-related illness. Questions on that one? All right. And again, hearing no questions, we will be seeking your approval of those policy actions at our monthly meeting this evening. Next item is another look at the proposed revisions to the 2023-2024 school calendar. As we noted at the last work session, the board had previously taken action on approving a calendar for that year, but we've made some modifications based on feedback and brought those modifications forward to you. And then again, heard from the board related to shifting one of the potential days to reflect a federal holiday. So we've made those changes and would be seeking your approval at the monthly meeting. Any questions about anything related to the calendar? All right. Then on to the next item. It is that time of year when a number of staff, led by, of course, our Chief Human Resources Officer, will come forward and share information related to our recruit-retain-and-reward efforts. And certainly, this is not the first time we've brought forward the issue of staffing to the board. I know this is an issue top of mind to each and every board member. We've had a number of discussions about how important staffing is in recruiting, retaining, and rewarding the very best for Henrico schools. So looking forward to an update. Mrs. Bolden?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Kinsella, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I am Francine Bolden, Chief Human Resources Officer, and today my colleagues and I are pleased to share an update regarding recruiting, retaining, and rewarding our educators. As always, these efforts are guided by Destination 2025, the Plan for HCPS, and the Associated Strategic Goal. I would like to begin the update with a review of our retention data. During the 1920 and 2021 school years, HCPS recorded a teacher retention rate of 91%. This was particularly noteworthy when juxtaposed against the progressively challenging landscape of teacher recruitment and retention. And then the plot thickened. The COVID-19 pandemic and the Great Resignation drastically altered the world of employment. Correspondingly, the HCPS teacher retention rate for the 2122 school year decreased to Teachers shared various reasons for separating from employment, the leading reason being accepting employment outside of the teaching profession. In order to fill vacancies, it is necessary to utilize a broad and multifaceted range of strategies. Today, division leaders and I will share just a few recruitment, retention, and reward strategies used in this regard. Teachers are more likely to be recruited and retained when salaries and other compensation are competitive. Our school board and Board of Supervisors actively work to ensure that teacher salaries are competitive, and for this school year, employees received a 5.06% salary increase. Just as we ensure the financial health of our employees, their physical health is important as well. Even with the national trend of rising healthcare costs, the division continues to cover, on average, 80% of healthcare premium costs with minimal increases to the employee premium. Additionally, the school board added to the calendar two wellness days. These are paid days off for employees with schools and offices closed. Rewarding and supporting employees is crucial to recruitment and retention. In September, we were pleased to provide employees a $500 retention bonus and a one-time $500 bonus in December, an appreciation for their dedication and service. Relatedly, our employees are excellent ambassadors of HCPS, and we endeavor to reward them for their grassroots efforts to assist in staffing positions. This year, employees received $500 for employment referrals that resulted in hires. For the upcoming school year, that referral amount is increased to $1,000. For those listening, multiple referrals are accepted. In addition to these monetary incentives, the school board desired to provide further support for employees and their families. Accordingly, the board agreed to waive the non-resident student tuition for HCPS employees. This year also marked Phase 2 of the Career Ladder, which innovatively connects salary advancements and personalized professional learning. You will hear more about Career Ladder milestones later in the presentation to include the infusion of additional financial and human capital resource supports, especially as related to provisionally licensed teachers. In this era of never-before-seen vacancy numbers in the teaching ranks, the division's reliance on provisionally licensed teachers has increased tremendously, as will be discussed by Kenya Jackson, Talent Acquisition Ambassador.
Good afternoon. The Henrico teacher workforce currently comprises 316 provisionally licensed teachers, which is nearly an 18.8% increase from last school year. There are an additional 100 newly hired teachers within our employment ranks who we anticipate will receive a provisional license upon Virginia Department of Education review. So what does it mean to be a provisionally licensed teacher? A provisionally licensed teacher is an individual who holds a bachelor's degree but did not complete a traditional college or university teacher preparation program. In other words, they majored in something other than teaching. In order to become fully licensed, additional coursework and/or assessments are required. The cost of additional coursework and assessments can be prohibitive for an aspiring teacher. To assist in this regard, HCPS pursues grant opportunities through the Department of Education and other entities. The grants are often targeted to specific teacher groups such as minority teachers, provisionally licensed teachers, STEM teachers, or early childhood teachers, to name a few, and have various use intents. For example, may be used as recruitment incentives or to pay for courses, examinations, or assessments. Through the Virginia Randolph Legacy Grant, sponsored by the Department of Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity, and HEFF, eligible provisionally licensed teachers and board subs are able to receive upfront financial support to fulfill assessment requirements necessary for licensure. Easing the financial burden that can be associated with the teaching career is of the utmost importance. In just a bit, Dr. Leslie Hughes, Chief Learning Officer, and Dr. Tracy Weston, Director of Professional Learning and Leadership, will share how the Career Ladder supports our provisionally licensed teachers both financially and instructionally. In addition to hiring provisionally licensed teachers as a strategy to fill essential teaching vacancies, teaching talent is acquired through teacher residency programs with our stakeholder universities. Through our partnership with the VCU Richmond Teacher Residency Program, participating individuals receive a master's degree at no cost in exchange for completing three years of employment in a hard-to-staff school in Henrico. The University of Richmond School-Based Teacher Education Program, or STEP, provides participants an opportunity to earn while they learn, as they are afforded one-half of a first-year teacher's salary plus benefits during their residency year. Participants are guaranteed a full-time contract in HCPS the following school year upon successful completion. Mindful of the potential within our own employment ranks, we also partner with VCU to encourage our instructional assistance to become teachers. The Richmond Teacher Residency Instructional Assistant Program provides current HCPS instructional assistants the opportunity to earn a degree in special education with no out-of-pocket cost. In addition to supporting provisionally licensed and residency teachers in the teacher pipeline, HCPS utilizes Grow Your Own programs to proactively manage the teacher applicant pool and improve retention rates by nurturing talent within our own schools and communities. Through these programs, the division builds relationships with prospective candidates as we help prepare them for future careers in education. One example of the impact of our Grow Your Own programs was showcased in last month's school board meeting Heart of Henrico Highlight, featuring Ms. Chanel Williams. Ms. Williams is a Henrico graduate who previously attended the Glenn Allen Center for Education and Human Development and was selected as a participant in the Henrico Teacher Scholars Program. As we watched the video highlight, we certainly saw and heard what it meant to Ms. Williams to become a teacher in the school division she attended as a student. As you recall, Dr. Cashwell previously provided you a more detailed description of our various residency and Grow Your Own programs. As we cultivate HCPS student interest in the teaching profession, we must be continually deliberate and innovative. To that end, Mr. Mac Baten, Director of Workforce and Career Development, will share with you our newest strategy to connect our students to the teaching profession.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. Thank you, Kenya. We always look and talk about growing our own. I'm very excited to talk about our latest efforts to grow our own teachers. Through Henrico County Public Schools Teacher Apprenticeship Program, we will be able to help our students get a jump start on their career option and also provide them with a unique set of skills that will better prepare them for the classroom. As with all apprenticeship programs, students will have the opportunity to earn while they learn. Through this high-quality, work-based learning opportunity, students will develop the core competencies needed to start them on their career pathway, and at the same time, through active engagements with all departments in Henrico County Public Schools, from construction and maintenance to transportation, they will learn about job-specific competencies and at the same time, learn the Henrico County way. The value of this comprehensive knowledge of our school system will not only serve the students in the future, but also help us train and retain the valuable commodity of a new but experienced teacher. I'd like to take a minute to explain how this teacher apprenticeship model will be implemented, what this model would look like, and how students will be able to gauge in this process. Rising juniors will sign up for a new teacher apprenticeship course that will be offered at our expanded Hermitage A Center. They will be exposed to rigorous curriculum that includes Teachers for Tomorrow courses, dual enrollment opportunities through Reynolds, and also a detailed training agreement that will be developed that outlines all the planned learning activities and expectations. These students will become a part of a cohort that will be exposed to all aspects of HCPS and continue their college journey as a cohort as well. What makes this apprenticeship model different? We know that getting students engaged early, not just through coursework, but through actual hands-on experiences, helps them understand that career pathway. By having the students working early, they will be able to see education from the other side and also develop relationships with current teachers who will help motivate them to continue in this career pathway. What is the value of the teacher apprenticeship model for students who have chosen to participate? They will have a clear pathway to not only becoming a teacher, but to a career in Henrico County Public Schools. Through the experiences, they will enter the profession with a much greater understanding of what it takes to become an effective teacher and also a deeper understanding of the entire educational system. For Henrico County, this is a low-cost opportunity to connect students early to the profession in HCPS. I work a lot with students and companies hoping to hire them. The companies that are successful understand the value of connecting early as they connect with a purpose. By helping the students understand the full picture of education, we can take some of the unknowns out of that first year of teaching in that first real teaching job and have students well on their pathway to becoming not just a good teacher, but a great teacher for Henrico County Public Schools. Another way we are aiming to recruit, retain, and reward educators is through the Career Ladder. Dr. Hughes and Dr. Weston will share an update on the Career Ladder program and share additional support available from the Division of Learning.
The HCPS Career Ladder is representative of a significant investment in support for our teachers. It stands as one of the most innovative and ambitious professional learning and educator advancement programs in the division's history. Before we provide an update, let's take a moment to review how eligible staff can be compensated through the Career Ladder for professional learning. The Career Ladder recognizes various professional pathways to achieve salary advancement, such as earning a doctorate degree, achieving National Board Certification, or attaining a recognized industry certification. But one of the most innovative pathways, and one that is unique to Henrico, is salary advancement through microcredential and specialization cohorts. By completing two microcredential professional learning programs, teachers with five years' teaching experience are eligible to engage with a cohort of HCPS educators to achieve a specialization in a specific topic of interest. Prior to the Career Ladder, teachers have limited advancement opportunities without becoming an administrator. The Career Ladder enables teachers to advance in the profession while remaining in the classroom to work with students. It is with great excitement that this school year, 2223, welcome Phase 2 of the Career Ladder, the official launch of microcredentials and specializations. A microcredential is a competency-based professional learning course or experience that provides 20 or more hours of targeted learning on a specific topic or learning series. The current list of approved microcredentials includes nationally offered and recognized programs like advanced placement reader training and licensed endorsements from universities, alongside new courses created within the division such as "So You Want to Be an ESL Teacher?", "Positive Classroom Management", and "Microcredentials Focused on the Culturally Responsive Education Model". Teachers can also be awarded a microcredential for approved professional learning participation that occurred prior to the launch of the Career Ladder. For school year 2223, over 300 teachers have enrolled in and completed microcredentials. Another benefit of the Henrico Career Ladder is the opportunity to attain a microcredential that honors high-quality professional learning earned outside Henrico schools, and also incentivizing the creation of microcredential courses for Henrico teachers that are also facilitated by Henrico teachers. In addition to microcredentials, Henrico's first two 32-week specialization cohorts began on January 10th. Forty-eight professionals representing all five magisterial districts in both elementary and secondary levels applied and were selected to participate in the first two Career Ladder specializations, Teaching and Learning and Diverse Learners. Specializations, which are much like a district design master's degree, are developed and taught by HCPSU adjunct faculty, Henrico teachers and leaders, our experts in the field. Upon successful completion of a specialization, eligible staff receive a 4.8% pay increase, and they're also eligible to apply to join HCPSU adjunct faculty and potentially teach future specializations. Feedback from cohort members has been overwhelmingly positive and clearly conveys the immediate impact learning experiences are having on instructional practices. As Kenya mentioned earlier in the presentation, Henrico has over 400 provisionally licensed teachers, and this group proves to be one of our greatest resources in growing our own. The minimum number of courses required for provisionally licensed teachers to attain a professional studies license is six, with each course costing approximately $800. Other provisional licenses, such as those for special education and elementary teachers, require additional courses. Without financial support, coursework can be cost prohibitive. Additionally, provisionally licensed staff only have three years to complete the required courses. Through the Career Ladder and pending VDOE approval, Henrico will fully fund the six required licensure courses through iTeach while also providing internal support through in-person professional learning. iTeach is an online program that provides an alternative pathway to licensure, and one of the greatest benefits of the program is that full licensure can be attained in one year. With targeted professional learning through the lens of a Henrico educator, partnered with coursework from iTeach, eligible provisionally licensed teachers will have the resource and support needed to become competent professionals in the classroom. Support in a variety of formats is critical to teacher retention and the ability to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers. It is also important to highlight that Career Ladder funding also provides financial support for full-time employees. This support includes an increase to $1,500 in reimbursement funding for professional learning opportunities such as coursework, conferences, instructional workshops, payment of license renewal fees, and reimbursement for successfully completed praxis exams and other VDOE licensure assessments.
The teacher shortage has presented challenges for the dedicated teachers in our employ, particularly those in schools in our districts which experienced high numbers of vacancies this school year, such as seen as the Verina and Fairfield Magisterial Districts. To bridge gaps, the division continues to provide additional resources to both staff and schools. But as a district, what additional opportunities are available, both financially and through human capital, that attract more teachers to schools that historically have had large number of vacancies? We're glad you ask. Division leaders examined a variety of data points, focusing on the number of our provisionally licensed teachers, as well as vacancy data over this school year. We met with teacher focus groups, initiated conversations with school leaders, and continually reviewed data over the course of this school year. After a thorough review of various data and remaining true to the purpose of the Career Ladder and the strategic goal of recruit, retain, and reward, nine schools, which are seen on the slide, will hold a Career Ladder designation at HCPS Opportunity Schools for the 2023-2024 school year. These schools will have additional opportunities to explore innovative resources that may prove to have a greater impact on recruiting and retaining educators. Opportunity Schools receive the Career Ladder designation for three years, regardless of any changes in their combined rates of vacancies and provisionally licensed individuals. So what does it mean to be in Opportunity Schools? As shown on the slide, each Opportunity School will receive additional resources, personnel, and professional learning. Within these schools, licensed instructional personnel will be eligible for additional compensation supplement of approximately $3,000. In the near future, staff from the Departments of School Leadership, Human Resources, and Learning will meet with the principals from each of the Opportunity Schools to develop a specific plan for the 2324 school year. During the planning phase, it will be critical to continually review the data from each school and allow the principals to have voice in the planning process to meet the needs of each school. However, to provide the board with some examples of additional supports, each school could receive additional personnel, such as an administrator, permanent substitutes, and a teacher fellow. A Henrico teacher fellow is a highly effective classroom teacher who may spend a portion of the workday teaching students and a portion working closely with first-year and provisionally licensed teachers. This new position, created in part of the Career Ladder, will support new and provisionally licensed teacher with lesson design and delivery, student engagement through strong Tier 1 instruction, co-teaching, and the day-to-day management of professional responsibilities. The teacher fellow's classroom will serve as a learning lab that models research-based instructional strategies for teachers to observe and practice. In addition, teacher fellows will also support PLCs, professional learning communities, in their assigned schools. Professional learning tailored to meet the needs of the teachers, staff, and administrators will be provided, as well as additional resources such as central support for professional learning communities that support instruction. On the slide, the board will see a timeline of events occurring thus far to plan for Opportunity Schools. While this list is not exhaustive of the work, it does serve to highlight the ongoing data review, focus groups, principal meetings, professional learning, and differentiated support. During the summer, Opportunity Schools will receive professional development tailored to their plan and will receive ongoing support during the 2324 school year. We hope you've enjoyed hearing updates to the strategic goal of recruiting, retaining, and rewarding HCPS staff. At this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. I don't know. Let me see. Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Dr. Weston, Dr. Hughes, and Mr. Baten. We've been waiting for this presentation, as staffing has certainly been top of mind for everyone. Board members, let's start with questions and comments. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzala. Thank you for all of y'all's work in this. We know that our people are our greatest resource in our county and also the hardest to come by and to replace. And so this work is just tremendously important. A couple of questions around the career ladder. So when we looked at the micro credential list, the last one listed on the very last one listed said additional master's degree and it had an asterisk by it. Can you?
Yes.
Tell me more.
If teachers and staff who have a master's degree automatically receive a grade increase, but for our staff who have multiple master's degrees or endorsements, that can count as a micro credential for them.
Wonderful. I'm excited to hear that because I know as we look at trying to increase dual enrollment offerings, our greatest hurdle there is the required master's hours in the content area. And so I'm excited to have this on the ladder because I see we have some other opportunities around AP and that sort of thing. So as we're trying to really broaden those opportunities across the board, I'm glad that we have that master's degree for the content area in there to hopefully be able to grow those opportunities for our students. So as we look at these micro credentials and a lot of these, some of these are national programs or programs through VCUIC or the College Board. Are some of these trainings available through Henrico?
Yes. Yes. So we are in the process, I think we have 20 currently for Henrico, and they are in the process of being developed as we speak. This will be an ongoing menu or catalog of options that will be created to meet the needs of our teachers.
So as a teacher wants to engage in this kind of professional learning and grow a micro credential, are opportunities limited, is space limited? Is it a first come, first served or how are?
That is a great question. So they're ongoing and right now we have not had to turn away any teachers, but we are offering multiple sections of micro credentials. So if the case occurs that you may not be in one for the first semester, then you would be on the list to be the first for the next semester.
Great. Excited to hear about that. I'm also really excited to hear about these, this Opportunity Schools. I know this has been a conversation between the superintendent and board members for at least a couple of years as I look at Ms. Augur nodding. And one of the challenging things was to figure out what's the metric, right? What's the metric that says which schools fall under this and not? And so I appreciate the diligent time to develop that and develop it in a meaningful way as well as have that kind of three-year buffer. Because we're, correct me if we're wrong, we're hoping if this works, then it will almost, if it's successful, then a school will move out of that category, right? Because we want the turnover and the provisionally licensed teachers, we want all of that to decrease. So I appreciate that there's a buffer there, that the school is kind of, once you qualify, you're built in for a while so we can continue to have, because what we're really, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're really hoping for for these schools is continuity. Because we know that makes a difference for students, that makes a difference for families, but also as teachers, like I think as a first-year teacher, some of my greatest resources were the teacher down the hall that has been doing this longer than I have and they've seen the things and I can pop by. And so making sure we have those resources at the school and create those continuity and those kind of natural PL opportunities in our school, I'm hoping that this will be a big step forward in that for those schools listed. And I appreciate, to that note, that it's not just additional compensation, it's looking at putting those master teachers there and all those different pieces because it's those wraparounds that help. Those first few years of teaching are hard. There's no way around it. They are hard. And so having those supports that you talked about in place to help ebb the tide a little bit, to get over those first couple of years, and then we'll have teachers who love that community and are invested there and can reinvest in other teachers. So I'm optimistic about this and I appreciate all the thought y'all have put into the pieces and developing that. Just one other thing which Ms. Bolden knows that I'm a big fan of, we've been talking about for three years. But as we continue to look at other ways to think outside the box and recruit, I'll just continue to bring forth looking at job sharing opportunities, which is a lot easier in a secondary setting than an elementary school setting. But just to be a thought leader on how to break outside that box with part-time opportunities and job sharing. And we know we have a lot of amazing educators that the last few years have been really hard and so they've stepped away from education, but perhaps they would want to dip their toe back in in a part-time setting. And a lot of times, those are some of our really, really amazing teachers. And the reason they had to step away and it was too much is because they are all in. And so anyway, thank you for all of it. There's no easy answers here. This is hard. This is hard work, but again, it's our greatest resource. So thank you for your thoughtful development of these.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Augur.
I just wanted to be sure you were, okay, we're ready. So thank you, Adam Chair. I love one of, and I honestly don't remember, there's so many of you presenting to us right now. I don't remember who said it, that we're continuing to be innovative. Who said that? All of you. And I love that because I look at, you know, because some of us, we have the opportunity to see what goes on in other districts and I don't hear about this anywhere else. So when somebody else said this is unique to Henrico, so is it anywhere else? Is anybody else endeavoring to do this? I'm really curious.
So there have been models of a career ladder across the nation that we have looked at and spoken to representatives from those school divisions, but none are exactly like everything that we are attempting to accomplish in Henrico. So the program is very unique to Henrico.
So once again, leading the way, which is a tribute to all of you and so appreciated by all of us, but I love that we're being innovative. And I think it also needs to be said that our county counterparts really support this and see this. I mean, because I remember when we were talking to our counterparts that, you know, because on the county side, there is an ability to move from one rung on that ladder of salary. And there are ways to do that in a lot of professions, but teaching is just not one of them. And I think it's one of the things that teachers have for years looked at other professions and said, well, why not us? So I'm hoping other people will come to us just like they have with our CTE programs that MAC is pioneering the way there, that we're doing the same thing here. So I think that's wonderful. And so I love that we're doing the apprenticeship program because a lot of people, that is the way they learn. They learn by doing that and growing our own, all of that. And I had that ability when I was in the dark ages and learning to be a teacher just from watching my family members. And I would go to school with them and do all of that. So I saw firsthand that how valuable that is. But I do, one thing I wanted to follow up on was our, at our Opportunity Schools, that you have specific plans, but I'm curious about the one that admin and teacher supports. Because one of the things that I think that we need to be realistic about is that sometimes teachers need support with students who need extra help. They need another set of hands in that classroom. They might have a heavy load of ESL students. They might have students who during the pandemic or there's learning loss there. And they also might have behavior issues, things like that. So sometimes it is those supports are someone else in the classroom, like an ESL teacher. So is that on the radar too? I know you talked about having, you know, other people, but you know, specifically, especially in the behavior area, I worry about that for support.
So specifically with the teacher fellow, and the focus of a teacher fellow really is that new teacher, the provisionally licensed teacher, and in some cases, the board subs. So it's that targeted differentiated learning that our new teachers need. But in addition, our teacher fellows can and will support all teachers in the building through professional learning and through professional learning communities. In addition, each teacher fellow will be trained in CHAMP, which is a proactive approach to classroom management through student engagement, so strong tier-one instruction. So yes, the teacher fellow will be able to kind of work with some of the things that you mentioned, but it would not necessarily be ESL support.
Okay.
And I think that was the importance of us calling out the fact that we're going to meet with each principal and develop a plan because we want principals to have voice to say, what is it your school needs? You know, these schools qualified for Opportunity Schools based on the metric, as Mrs. Shea said, but even within these schools, each one of them have different needs. And so we want the principals to tell us exactly where they feel like there are opportunities for us to support. And as we develop those plans, if ESL were to rise to the top in any of those schools, then we could support from a central.
Right. Well, and you know, I think one of the main ways that we can retain our teachers is to let them know we're listening.
Correct.
We hear what their needs are and then we come in and support them specifically what, because no two schools are alike, no two populations are alike, and they need different things depending on what's going on in that area or whatever. And I'm especially thinking about the behavior supports because I know that some of our teachers, especially the ones who are relatively new to the profession, that's an area where they're just, it's hard to know how to really reach a student who's having behavior problems. So I like the idea of a very specific plan. But one of the things we as a board have talked about so often, and this is just this list, is exactly what we talk about, is putting resources where they're needed.
Correct.
And whether it's budget, it's personnel, whatever it is, it's putting them and meeting the needs of kids head-on. And so that's, I think, one of the things that really resonates with me with this is that we're doing what our kids and our teachers need us to do, and I'm hoping that the teachers will feel that support. And that will say, okay, I'm going to stay in Henrico because I get the support I need. And that's a very basic way of looking at it, but it's also, you don't get that support elsewhere.
That's right.
So I am really appreciative of the update, but also the thought and the work that's gone into this. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Augur and Ms. Atkins.
So I'm very thankful for the strategy behind this and the time that you took to make sure that it was purposeful. And talking with other district leaders to find out what's working well, what's not working, and let's figure out the pieces that fit here in Henrico County Public Schools. So well done, and I applaud everyone because it certainly was an effort that took more than just the individual standing here. However, your leadership in making sure that it became a reality is special. And then I also have a message that is for family-specific, so I'm going to turn and shift my head this way to the cameras. And to let families know that every single position offered in Henrico County Public Schools is to develop the potential of a child. All the positions. And that adults, parents, neighbors, families, everyone significantly impacts recruiting and retaining staff. Our children are smart. They are mirrors of what they see and experience. Therefore, if our children are observing behaviors, cursing, fighting, or yelling frequently, in those cases, they will begin to really believe that that's a standard communication method. And we will see that behavior in the school. And on the other hand, when our children see adults resolving conflicts respectfully and peacefully, then they will start to develop those conflict resolution skills that we want to see in the school and their skills that they will have with them as they become adults. So please understand that in addition to all of this greatness that is happening, we need your help too. The role of an adult in shaping children's behavior and their attitude is the difference in what we need to attract and retain qualified staff, educators, who are committed to providing high-quality education. And I am hopeful that as adults, that all of us will really work hard in modeling the behavior that we want to see in our children and being mindful of what we say, being mindful of what we do around our children, and consciously modeling positive behaviors. That's how we get to nurturing environments for children to grow. And the truth is that our future leaders, or perhaps in a few years, they may be your neighbors, but they're in our schools right now and our teachers and our staff need help with behavior. If we want to keep these wonderful teachers and staff that we have, we have to be an image of what we want our children to reflect in our schools. I don't know how else to say that our children are constantly absorbing, constantly paying attention. As adults, we've gone through COVID. As adults, we have experience of pain and pleasure. However, as children, we're shaping their pain and their pleasure. And we have what an awesome opportunity to show them how wonderful they are and to be an image of elevation moving forward. That's my message for families. And I did have another thought while I was speaking, and so I'll turn back this way around regarding the reward. I want to learn more about some of our other positions as well, incentives and pay increases specifically, and I want to share with you what those positions are. Of course, not in this moment, but something I hope to see in the future. And so, and the reason these positions are selected is because I am getting feedback on them. And so I want to be proactive in this moment. And those positions are custodians, cafeteria workers, secretaries, athletic directors, and coaches. I'm hopeful to hear more about those because some of the feedback is around what does advancement look like in those spaces? And so getting ahead of that question before it becomes more of an issue, I think, is wise. And then lastly, I want to talk, we talked a little bit about this, and Dr. Cashwell, I'll just mention it in this setting, that there are some virtual courses like Geometry that are offered by external partners, and they are absolutely experiencing some of the same things that we are. And I'm hopeful on our radar that we are looking into how we can help our virtual students succeed that are dealing with high turnover with our external partners. In addition to that, I would love to learn if we have a plan or understand what solutions look like with our external partners that are having the turnover. I mentioned geometry and math specifically because that's where I'm getting the feedback from, from those particular classes in math under the, I think, proximity learning and some of the external partners. Those are the spaces where I'm getting the feedback and it's becoming stronger and stronger. So I'm hopeful that in that space of staffing, recruit, retain, of course, they're external, we don't do that for them, but it impacts our students. And having turnover in the virtual space will certainly impact them negatively academically. So in the future, I'm hopeful to learn more in that space as well.
Sure. Thank you for that, Mrs. Atkins. We can certainly get that data and information for the board.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mrs. Gonzala.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first, I want to begin simply by congratulating the 25 new nationally board certified teachers. I just want to start there. I want to congratulate also, but also Dr. Weston. I've heard some feedback from some teachers that began the process, but kind of had to pull out the process because of the stress level or the balancing act of working in a high need school and making the year commitment to, to achieve and attain this. Can we talk quickly about how we help those teachers dealing with the barriers, really, that for them, you know, everybody's internalization is different, that are preventative for them because truly the number is not as diverse as I wish it would be. You know, gender, race, school, district, Fairfield, Verona, Tuckahoe. So could you just speak to that for me?
Yeah, so the question that you're asking is one that we are looking to continually tackle. So Henrico, as you noticed, had 25 new nationally board certified. That was the most of any division represented last evening and in the state. What we do differently is that we host our own internal cohorts. And Dr. Baker spends a lot of time visiting schools, recruiting and supporting. And the challenge that you mentioned is the one that we're looking at as a team and how we can have additional supports at individual schools. Now, some models that we've used in the past is that we have cohorts located at the schools. So that's more time in your ability, not having to travel with internal support from our facilitators that are Henrico-based facilitators, our teachers, our current NBCT teachers, and Dr. Fellas. I don't have a perfect answer for you, but it is something that we are continually working to open more doors and to provide more support for all teachers, especially the teachers you just mentioned.
No, I appreciate that because this is, this is, since we just celebrated them, we just acknowledged them, and we give kudos to us as division for having the most in the state. And when we talk about equity and equality and just talking about the diversity of our population of teachers, and as we talk about micro-conditioning, as we talk about professional learning and development, it's important that we are conscious and cognizant of the challenges that have become barriers even to them. Because I believe that this is definitely homogenized in recruit retaining our teachers. So thank you for that, and hopefully, as we continue, the numbers will get better. Just talk about, not the overall number, but the number of teachers that are diverse in regards to, you know, all those things I mentioned. So thank you. I also want to just say thank you again for this comprehensive breakdown of compensation and benefits. I think it's very good to have it visual, and then that's on the macro level, and then we can be more definitive with the micro level. Can someone tell me, if not later on, share with me, what's the percentage of teachers who are taking advantage of these micro-credentia? Do we have any, or is that too nebulous of a question?
Well, we started, the official launch was in July, and we've had over 300 teachers this year, and that's those who have completed, and we have ongoing micro-credentials, and we'll have that throughout the summer.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. That's a good thing. Now, I want to just kind of reiterate what my colleague said, Ms. Shea and Ms. Augburn in regards to opportunity schools. I want to thank Ms. Bolden and Dr. Cashwell and the staff because I've been kind of talking about this and trying to figure out the ways, as Ms. Augburn referenced, of our creativity when it comes to our compensation model. So we identified these schools, and when we look at the vacancies we have presently, so I want to kind of speak to right now, and we know that's what is to come. Verona High School has 12.4 teacher vacancies, Roff has 11, Fairfield Middle has eight, Highland Springs Elementary has 14, Glen Lee has eight, and then the Academy of Virginia Randolph has seven. So we look at those numbers, and we know how high they are. Ms., Dr. Hughes, you referenced the awareness of the challenges specifically in Fairfield and in Verona. So the question I raise is, can I get kind of some data on how many long-term subs we have in these schools? Because again, as I've stated previously, schools that have certified teachers, it's directly related to the academic performance of their students. And so when you have one school that has 14 teacher vacancies, and so then the correlation becomes performance, academic performance that we get, and we know what some of the root cause analysis is. So kind of Ms. Bolden, speak to that, and then I'm going to ask a follow-up question.
Well, to answer your question, yes, we can certainly provide you the information regard to the number of long-term subs that are in these schools and positions.
But to your point, and I think, you know, as we talked about the metric for this opportunity schools, it's, you certainly called out the vacancy rates being high, and then it's the number of provisionally licensed and/or board subs, you know, or unfilled positions, which would then be board subs. So looking at absolutely the impact that has on a building and, and all of those things.
Well, to your point, so Ms. Bolden, to Dr. Passer's point, kind of massage that for me, let me see that picture, because she just basically said it's not just, you know, long-term subs, there's some other resources we have in the buildings to kind of compensate for that. So if you can kind of just give me that picture.
Right. So we're doing a number of things, and I'll circle back, and hopefully, I'm not all over the place, because I know you were talking about the here and now. One thing we are doing is we recently had a job fair for elementary, and we have one scheduled for secondary in March. We are looking at the cream of the crop and perhaps hoping to entice some people to fill our positions now, not only for the next school year. We are working with current board subs who are interested to become fully licensed as well. And we have a number of supports through our partners, through tuition reimbursement and grants and those type of things. So we're actively working to identify individuals who are poised to fill those positions or could fill those positions with a little additional support.
No, I appreciate that. Again, I just want to be clear on that, you know, we are aware of this, and we realize what the byproduct of this is. Thank you for that, and I look forward to getting the data. Dr. Hughes, quick question. So given everything that Ms. Bolden just stated, what are, what is our long-term kind of plan to assist these students with academic supports if we recognize some deficiencies in, you know, the instruction that they're receiving?
Sure. Well, we've learned a lot this year, as you can well imagine, as we have really tackled this high vacancy rate and the provisionally licensed teacher rate. And we've talked to a lot of teachers and administrators about what these provisionally licensed teachers or board subs need. And we know they need two things. So one bucket is they really need that Henrico way, which Matt talked about earlier. Like, they need professional learning in just our Henrico learner profile and our instructional model. They need to know, you know, what's expected of instruction. And so that's sort of one set of professional learning that we give that's sort of broad, if you will. And then we really have to meet each one of the teachers where they are, because teachers come in, as Kenya and Francine said, each person comes to a provisionally licensed role with a different set of skills, right? And so we have to make sure that we're meeting each teacher where they are and meeting those needs, which will be how the teacher fellow is so valuable next year, because there actually be boots on the ground. And so I know that doesn't solve the problem quite this year. We've got a lot of things in place as far as central support, specialists going out in buildings, our coaches, ILCs. But moving forward, I think that teacher fellow, coupled with some of the other resources that we're going to be able to put in the schools, will be so valuable to meet those individual teachers' needs.
No, again, thank you for the articulation of it. We're not just kind of, you know, guessing at this. We're very intentional about recognizing that there is learning loss, recognizing there are gaps, and we're trying to close those gaps.
Right.
I want to, again, just reiterate, thanks, thanks about just the comprehensive nature of the opportunity schools process, because the compensation and supports, but then also the contextualization of implementation. That's all Ms. Augburn said, I just said in two words. But the, the intentionality of learning the ethos at the building and determining what it is they need that differentiates from another school.
Correct.
It's not a one size fits all.
No, it's not.
And as we talk about one in Henrico, we have to talk about it through the lens of individuality in the context of where they are.
Absolutely.
So I look forward to hearing how we've made progress, and I'm, I'm just excited that, again, this is, this is concretized for the context. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. My colleagues certainly asked a lot of questions. I do have a few more. And to everyone's point, I think the entire board really does appreciate the, really just the intentionality, as Reverend Cooper said, about the opportunity schools process, so that we're going to give these schools, these students in these schools, but yet the teachers and administrator in the schools, more support, whatever it needs, in their building. I continue to think that until we can fill these gaps, I always think about prep. Is there anything that we can do for our teachers and, you know, that want to retire? But, you know, we've invested in them, they are valuable resources to us, and they've certainly filled some of our gaps. So do we accept, expect to make any changes to prep, or are we limited by retirement rules, IRS rules, and VRS rules, things of that nature?
I am so happy to say this. So yes, we are currently looking at revisions to the prep policy, and the next step, we have actually made some suggested revisions. The next step is to convene through Ms. Coy, focus groups, where we're actually talking to current participants and future retirees to see what would entice them into the program. So please stay tuned, we are working on that.
Okay, so let me just, I'm very excited about that because that's been on my list for a couple of years, because I believe we've already, you know, there's just so much valuable experience in our retired teachers. Would that be open to perhaps future prep folks, current prep folks, or folk, because once you depart, you can't come back and do prep, correct?
Right. That, that is correct. So the changes would be applicable to current prep participants and future participants.
Current and future. Very nice. I can't wait for that update. Dr. Cashwell knows how excited I am, we, we talk about it a lot.
And I'm glad you asked the question, because we, there was so much to highlight in this presentation, and I know we toyed with weather to drop a nugget about it, so I'm glad you asked the question. The team has really left no stone unturned. And to your point, there are some limitations and some challenges associated with those kinds of programs because of separate, you know, all of the things you just mentioned with VRS. But they will, they've found a few touch points that may be difference makers and look forward to getting more information directly from our retirees and prep participants about what will be impactful.
Well, fantastic. And if I could just share some feedback, I have never talked to a prep participant that didn't say something about healthcare. I'm just saying, you know, I don't know if it's feasible or not because of the rules associated with retirement, but a lot of them speak to the healthcare cost. So wait a minute, so as to the micro-credentia, I heard 48, but then I heard over 300. So 48 in January?
So 300 for micro-credentials and 48 for specializations. So the micro-credentials are prerequisites for, to apply for a specialization.
Okay. And, and you say we've got over 300 interested. Are we hearing from, are we hearing from employees that are just like, what can you lift off my plate? Like, I appreciate all this extra that you're making available to me, but I'm really just this work-life balance on top of trying to keep up with my job? And are we hearing from those employees, like, what can we do for them outside of referral bonuses?
I think that's the reality of the feedback that we receive, but the focus of the micro-credentials and the specializations was really to provide the professional learning that our staff, our teachers are asking for the most, and making it available to them and make, and kind of incentivizing it as well.
For those who want to stay in the classroom and advance, right?
Correct. And that's what I was going to add.
An important nuance. And I mean, certainly, you know, we're thinking about lots of opportunities for employees to, you know, have their needs met within Henrico schools, and some individuals are looking to grow into leadership, but may not be interested in leaving the classroom or they, it may have been in the past that, you know, attaining a master's degree or taking outside courses was cost prohibitive. This eliminates those barriers for teachers. So I'd say it takes a lot off the plate. In some cases, you're not leaving Henrico proper, if you will, even the premises to engage in coursework. It's built-in professional development. We're honoring things that people have achieved in the past that we've offered. So certainly, when it's, when we're thinking about all employees and compensation and all of those recruit, retain, reward, there are some, some general pieces to that, making sure our, our pay rates competitive at all levels of the scale, that our healthcare premiums, you know, that we're making sure we contribute as much as we can to not pass any costs on to the employees. So it's certainly not meant to be extra work, but for those who are looking to grow, and we hear that from teachers, you know, that, you know, one of the main reasons, you know, that pops up as the reasons teachers leave the profession is no way to advance. And I think Mrs. Augburn really hit on that earlier, that, you know, the teacher pathway is, may feel like, you know, that, that it's that position, which fits the needs of a lot of teachers, but not everyone. So how do you have opportunities for growth and development and leadership in that position? And, and this provides what's really been a missing avenue there, and is certainly not meant to be a requirement or an extra on anyone. And certainly, pay advances come naturally through our compensation plan and not just to those who participate here.
Okay. And then how many of our IAs? You said IAs who want to become teachers, that's very exciting. Have we had a high level of interest there? And I'm not looking for an exact number, I just want a little bit more. I just heard you mention it.
We have, we have had interest. I mentioned through the Richmond Teacher Residency IA Program. That is a fairly new program that started last year, and so we had two IAs to participate. But in addition to that program, our very own Special Education Department overseen by Dr. Katie Smith, we have a, a program in which we provide upfront tuition costs for IAs who currently have a bachelor's degree and are aspiring to be teachers. And so we work collaboratively with UVA Wise to ensure that they become provisionally licensed, they take the course through UVA Wise, and then our members and leaders of our Special Education Department will meet periodically with those IAs to take what they're learning from UVA Wise and kind of Henriconize it so that it is, you know, applicable. And many of our IAs are in that cohort to become future Special Education teachers.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. And then I think the next thing is, you know, as I look at the chart of public sector and private sector, you know, there are so many reasons employees may leave us. But when I think really, outside, my colleagues have addressed our teachers in the comprehensive school setting very well, I need to address our CTE staffing, specifically nursing or automotive. These people are specialists in their business. How, or, I mean, are, what is the answer to staffing those positions? Because literally, they can make twice as much money in some cases, working, not for Henrico County Public Schools, right? So who would like to take that question as to what we're doing there?
Well, if I had the answer, I'd be a very rich man. But I will tell you, I think part of it, it gets back to what we want in the classroom teaching our young people, because teaching is truly a calling. And so what we find that a lot of people will leave to go get money, thinking the grass is greener on the other side, but then they find out their real passion is working with young people. I think we have to do a better job on air end to attract that person that's been out making the money, their kids are grown, they've gone through college, now let's bring them and let them find that passion and ignite that in the classroom. So I think, so it's not always about the money, it's how do we get that passion in front of that person? And we have internally, with the support of everyone, do a lot of bringing people in to help assist us teach. Most recently, today at the Career Rodeo, walk around, the business people seeing it are sitting there saying, wow, this is, this has got to be so rewarding to work with young people in this way. But at the end of the day, yes, that is something that hopefully the micro-credentials and all these other opportunities to help bolster the pay and make it equivalent. I don't think we can ever match the pay, but I think when you look at making it equivalent for the amount of work, the passion of doing it, and also the flexibility of the schedule, nursing in particular, most nurses are, you know, 12-hour days, you know, three days a week. So when they find, I want to match my schedule to my child's schedule, that's when they start looking at us. But we need to continue to figure out how to reach that. Now, one other thing we have worked on, working with our business partners, like for instance, Bonds Accords, we are actually working on a contract with them now. They will hire the person at their rate of pay, we will pay them what we would normally pay that, that person. And then when we're not using them during the summer or whatever, they're going back to the hospital and working. For us, that is the best of both worlds, because that bolsters their pay, it keeps this person up to date and current on everything. their pay, it keeps this person up-to-date and current on everything that's happening in the workplace and connects their students to that workplace. So, for us, that's a win-win-win, making that happen. So, there are a few business partners that are saying, we need to figure out how to get into the schools with their people because their ultimate goal is to hire the nurses that we put out. So, it becomes a win for them as well.
I appreciate you highlighting that very much. I mean, specifically to CTE, having spent my morning at the rodeo as well, talking to business folks and, and just hearing what they have to say and then also talking to some of our employees, you know, just walking up to them and saying, you know, wow, thank you for choosing, you know, to follow your passion and, and be with our students because you could go to, I think Ford was there and I was like, because you could go to Ford and make twice as much, almost twice as much money, right? So, thank you for highlighting that just specifically around our CTE because I know we have vacancies there and my colleagues have addressed some of our other specific vacancies. And if I might just bring forward, in support of what Ms. Atkins said about our custodians and our office assistants and our bus drivers and that's a compensation, like budget, but it's recruit retain reward because as we look at our staffing reports, we continue to see turnover in those positions and I worry about the fall of 2023. And then if I may also just add, you know, I know we've talked about discipline and, and so much safety. And I've been hearing from some folks about safety on our buses. You know, the, right now, the focus is, is so much of it is in our schools and again, but I just want to highlight safety on our buses for our bus drivers. And again, it's relevant because recruit retain reward and we as board members get to see the personnel reports and which folks are, you know, staying and going. But thank you so much for this presentation. As all of our colleagues have said, we greatly appreciate it and we look forward to more thinking outside the box and, and filling the gaps as we move forward. Dr. Cashwell?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I thought of one more thing, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
I'm wondering, after I look at, this is a tremendous amount of information. So, how are we communicating all of this to our teachers, our staff members? How do we help them digest everything that is now a possibility for them? Thank you. I appreciate it, Ali. I mean, because when you think about it, it's a lot and on top of what they're already having to juggle in school and all this, I'm just wondering, how do they find their way forward to, to work it all out? So, how are we doing it?
So, it's multi-layered. At the schools listed on the screen, the principals will be meeting with staff and speaking with them about the Opportunity School Initiative and about the career ladder and how this is all intersecting. For the larger staff community, we will be sending out an email to all staff tomorrow, linking them to a, a news release and a list of frequently asked questions that are on our website. It will be included in our staff newsletter and we'll also be sharing, actually through our parent newsletter, The Binder, next week because there may be some family members who would now like to come and work at one of these schools or any of our schools. And so, we're going to continue to work with the tools that we have and then also create some handout materials that are available in libraries and other locations throughout the county.
And I appreciate that because I can just imagine, you see this, it could be very overwhelming what the possibilities are and, and so I'm, I'm glad, I mean, multi-layered is the way to go and you hope if they didn't get to read the first time, they'll find another way. But the other thing I'll add is absolute support for what Mrs. Shea said about job sharing. When I first started with Henrico County, we had teachers who were doing that and it works because there are people who, they have time to teach two sections, especially in high school, like you said. And, and my son, when he was at Godwin, he had, there was a math teacher who taught two sections of math, that's what they did. They came in, they taught their two sections and then they went on to something else, I'm assuming. So, I'm hoping that we will see more and more of that because again, that's a way to get people to come back to the profession, maybe even part-time.
That's, that's correct. You know, it's an infinite amount of licensed endorsed teachers right now.
Absolutely.
And so, we are certainly entertaining that. In fact, it is happening particularly in our secondary levels. We have teachers that are teaching an additional class in combination with part-time teachers that had previously separated and now have returned. It is absolutely working in some of our secondary schools and we're certainly entertaining that as an option and our principals have been very receptive to that, to that process.
Well, and if we advertise it that way, I think that's the key because people go online, they, they look for a job opening, they see math teacher, they don't know that maybe if I could apply for it for a part-time. So, I think that's part of the key too, but I appreciate the fact that y'all are, are going there. So, thank you, I'm sorry to jump back in.
No, not, not at all, Ms. Ogbon.
Sometimes the older you get, the longer it takes to think of things.
I understand. Thank you so much. Dr. Cashwell, is that all?
Yes, and I again echo the board's thanks and gratitude to the entire central team who've been working so hard on a number of these initiatives and programs and, and bringing them forward in such a concise manner this, this afternoon for all of us. And I also want to thank the board for your continued commitment and support around this area, recruit, retain and reward. I know you have been vigilant as individuals and as a collective, championing all of the efforts we've put into place related to this goal. And you continue to challenge us to think differently about this, you know, unique circumstance we find ourselves in, troubled waters, if you will, when it comes to the landscape of, of the teacher shortage that we find ourselves in. And so, certainly you've challenged us to continue to do hard work and good work in this area and continue to innovate in that space. So, thank you for your commitment around this work. What you saw today presented wouldn't be possible without that support and commitment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Okay, the next item on the agenda for this afternoon is unfinished business. Board members, do we have any? It appears we do not. The next item would be new business. Board members, do we have any new business? No, we do not. Well, then the last item on today's agenda is the announcement of the meeting dates.
Madam Chair, I had to interrupt you. Could you, as our chair, just speak to what happened today that we were invited to and some of us able to go to?
Okay, thank you very much, Reverend Cooper.
Please forgive my interruption.
No, not at all, not at all. Matter of fact, I think I'd really like to invite Mr. Baitin up, back to the microphone. Board members were invited to the Richmond Raceway, to the Career Rodeo for our students. Our CTE students were able to show what they know to future employees and then that will lead the way into our next big event, which is signing day where our students will receive job offers and opportu, you know, opportunities for their future. So, Mr. Baitin, if you could just explain a little bit more what the board had the opportunity to experience today?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The, and first, thank y'all all for taking the time to get there. I know it's a busy day and we'd like to also thank Richmond Raceway for making that large available, the large building available for us at a very good cost. So, unfortunately, the day might not have been the best day, but it worked out great with the price. So, I do appreciate that. But this was an opportunity to reverse a job fair. So often, we expect employers to want to engage with our students and so they, they will go out for an interview, student will get dressed up in a suit and tie or a fancy dress and they'll sit down in front of employer and the employer will ask their set of questions and the students will, if they're nervous, they're looking down or, you know, fiddling and the employer goes, huh, he doesn't really know what he's doing. So, you reverse that, put the student in a place that he's or she is comfortable doing what they love and let the employers walk around and see those students doing and talk to the students. And what really, what happens, you ignite that connection between the student and employer, which, you know, this is how you build that career pathway, you start to build those bonds. So, as the students are working, the employers are walking around, talking to each other, talking to the teachers, talking to the students, a lot of networking going on. And I think one of the most powerful things that was said to me today, I was talking to a young lady, this, well, actually, this is the employer saying, I was talking to a young lady, when I first walked up, she seemed very shy and then I asked her what she was doing. To me, that was the most powerful thing I heard all day because that said the student was confident, powerful, ready to talk, just needed an avenue. And he said, I'm going to hire her. So, and what they would do, they'd write the number down because you can't expect, you've got 500 students there working, you can't remember all the names and trying to write the names down. So, they, they were, they wear numbers. So, I see number 438. When I go up to the front to check out, I hand in my card and say, I'd like to get the resume for student number 438. And then that connection's made and the rest, we will see at signing day.
Thank you so much for giving what we all experienced today, just a very nice summary, better than I could have done. And thank you, Reverend Cooper, for reminding me, you have one more thing.
Would you mind recognizing our superintendent?
Oh, well, I was saving that for this evening.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry being presumptuous.
But, but we could do, but I've.
Knowledge, I'm sorry, just like.
Okay. So, yes, so congratulations to Dr. Cashwell on being named Superintendent of the Year for our entire region. And she is now, she is now in the running to become Virginia's Superintendent of the Year. No. Congratulations to you, Dr. Cashwell. More will be coming this evening, a proper recognition of, of this great achievement for, recognition for you. So, okay, so is that all we have for new business? Okay, so, once again, we're going to try to announce the next meeting dates, which is the last item on our agenda. The next meeting on our agenda actually is this evening, is our monthly meeting at 6:30 PM right here at New Bridge Auditorium. And then the next meeting of the Henrico School Board will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, March 9th, 2023 at 1:00 PM, though the meeting time may be adjusted as needed. And this meeting is adjourned.